Okay, Melody, everyone's in the room, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 1st. I can't believe it's August already. Meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. We all have agenda. I know of no changes. Does anyone else have any modifications they wish to make? All right, hearing none, the agenda will then stand as posted. You've all received Jim's meeting notes. I trust you've had a chance to look at them. Any questions of Jim? Comments? If there are none, I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting notes. Thank you. Was that Edna?
Yes.
Thank you, Edna. Who will second that motion, please? Thank you, Julie. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. The motion carries. You've all received the draft July 18 minutes from Gretchen. If you've had a chance to look at them, are there any corrections or additions you wish to make? If there are none, could I have a motion to approve the July 18 minutes as submitted?
So move.
Thank you, Edna. Second, Sean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. I don't have any announcements or correspondence. Jim, Gretchen, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, let me just, while I've got you all here captive, we know that Jim is going to be away on the next meeting, which is the 15th of August, and Joe is likely not able to attend. So is everybody else available for the 15th to ensure it's quorum? Yes. Okay, thanks very much for that information. All right, I think we can move into new applications. The first one up is John Connell to Walcott Drive, site plan review and special use permit for ground-mounted solar. Who is here for this application?
Hey, my name is Grayson Ball. I'm the project manager for John Connell's projects.
Okay, Grayson, would you like to explain to us what you'd like to do, please?
Yeah, I apologize about my video. I don't think it's working. It was a second ago. But yeah, John Connell and Michael Kosloff to Walcott Drive, Rhinebeck. There's a ground-mounted solar array consisting of 26 panels, two inverters for a total of 11.3 KW. That's the DC system size. We're at 9 KW AC. We are within the required setbacks. Since the pre-conference call that we had, we've shifted the array 13 feet to the left or towards the front yard to accommodate that rear setback. So we're in compliance there. As you can see, the setbacks are laid out on the site plan here. And yeah, that's about it.
Okay, Jim, comments?
Yeah, so it has been moved to the setbacks. All appear to be fine. No issues there. Really, the only comment I had is that during the site visit, I think the members should probably bring out someone from Hay Pack and just take a look to see if you think any kind of screening is necessary from the property to the right here. It's an old historic property. So just want to make sure that it's properly buffered. I know there's existing vegetation there. So just take a look at that. Otherwise, I think it all seems to check the boxes in the code.
Okay, planning board members, questions of Grayson? All right, Jim?
I had just one question. Is it going to require any significant clearing of mature trees?
So what, it's already cleared. We have, since that we shifted that 13 feet, we'll just clear about 13, 15 feet in addition to what we've, what's already been cleared. Aside from that, no.
Okay, anyone else?
I do have, if I can bring up really quickly, they did submit some pictures.
Okay.
I think they're in here. Here we go. Of what's been done already in terms of the clearing. And Grayson, if you don't, I don't know if you have any commentary on this. I'll just kind of scroll through them.
Yeah, you've got it. In this picture here, you're on, it says right side. You can see that rear property in question, that historical property. But if you, as you scroll down, you'll see, you know, the spring and summer growth, it's kind of filled in a little bit. It's just photos of the house from all sides. This is the trench path, trench path that you're on now. It's going to wrap around the garden. It's about 170 feet.
Okay, so when you say clearing, you're really talking about just some scrub and undergrowth, not really anything.
Nothing, major trees.
Okay.
And Grayson, is that the historic barn in the back that we see?
Yes.
Okay. So there is quite an open view from that property.
Right.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Jim, I think we have a draft resolution.
To do. Procedure resolution for your consideration for John Connell's site plan for installation of ground-mounted solar at two Walcott Drive. Accepting the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board advisors in the public. Classifying it as type 2 under seeker. We will send this to the CAB. We will send it to Dutchess County Planning as it is a site plan review. We will schedule the public hearing for, to the Gretchen's number. Another date. Gretchen, do you have the date?
I think it's the 6th.
6th, thank you. And we need to delegate to planning board members for a site visit.
Who would like to make a site visit?
I'll go.
Okay, Craig will go. I'll go with Craig. All right. That pretty much wraps up the resolution. So could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Thank you, Edna. Second, Julie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Grayson will be in touch with you to set up an opportunity for a site visit.
Great, thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
The second new application this evening, Andrew and Megan Cahill, 238 Rhine Cliff Road, site plan review, one-story addition garage and driveway change.
Yeah.
I see Mr. Cahill here.
Yeah, well, Megan, we're here.
And I see Scott Dutton. So who's going to present this application to us?
We'll kick it off.
Okay.
All right. So we purchased this home in late 2019, shortly before having our first child. And I think we can say we greatly underestimated how much stuff kids need, how much space they take up. But you know, lots changed, obviously, since 2019. We both started working from home and, and you know, the world's kind of changed a bit since then. So we're really looking to expand the size of the house to give us more time at this property. Really love the house, love the area that we're in. And since we have the two lots, you know, just under an acre, we'd really love to expand the living space in the current home. So we went in front of, I forget what it's called, sort of, you know, an initial planning meeting back in March where we were originally anticipating doing a large three-car garage and an additional bedroom upstairs and, and you know, got very clear feedback from you guys that there were some concerns around the size of that addition relative to other houses around us on the street. So we, you know, took that feedback to heart and since then, we've welcomed a second child and are really kind of bursting at the seams here. So we went back to Scott and asked him to revise the plans to really address some of the biggest pain points that we have with the house right now. So that would be, first things first, fixing the garage. So when we bought the house in 2019, we knew that the foundation on the current one-car garage was not very stable. And so we've always had plans to fix the garage, but we'd really love to have a two-car garage as opposed to single car and have access directly from the garage into the house. So that's a big pain point for us right now. We'd also like to add some mudroom space and move the laundry up from the basement to the first floor. So kind of adding a little bit of transitional space between a new garage and the existing house. And then with that, we would also be able to move the staircase, both the stairs that go from the first to the second story, as well as the attic stairs, which are kind of stacked on top of each other right now. The issue with the staircase is that the headspace for the stairs and the attic stairs protrudes into our third bedroom, which right now we're using as a nursery, but there's, the way that the room is laid out, there's not even room to put a bed in there, should we need to someday, or we will need to someday. So being able to move the staircase to remove that sort of bump out from that third bedroom in the front of the house would be a huge benefit for us. And then the last thing on the second story would just be expanding the existing bathroom. It's, we only have one full bathroom in the house, so expanding it into current closet space to just give us a larger full bathroom space on the second floor. So then the last sort of change that we would make on the exterior of the house would be expanding the size of the front porch to just kind of tie everything together, make sure that the garage doesn't look out of place. So something similar to, I'm sure you guys at some point saw the plans, our neighbor just across the street recently put a new porch on the front of their house. So, you know, doing something similar to that style-wise, I think it looks great on that house. So we would be looking to kind of tie it all together with a larger front porch there. So I know that was kind of a lot, but sums it up. And, you know, the last piece that you may or may not already know about, but we are in the process, our septic system was, began failing a few months ago. And so we've been stuck doing laundry at our parents' house across the river for the last six months or so, which hasn't been fun. But, you know, really hoping to move this process forward as quickly as we can, just because the footprint of this addition is going to impact the plans that we have, pretty much final plans. We're just waiting to bring with our engineer to the health department for emergency approval for repair of the septic system.
Okay, Scott?
It might be helpful for the board members if you could bring up the 3D renderings that our office prepared.
Are they in a different file?
Yeah, I think they were in a separate.
The bedroom count is not changing, is that right?
Correct. It's currently a three-bedroom and it would be staying as three.
Scott, what was the name of the file? Off the top of your head, I'm looking. They're rent, I've got them.
So what we did here is prepared a 3D model of the site. And if you go through the nine images, give the board the opportunity to see how the reduced addition is more contextual than the original design intent. Megan and Andrew had.
The planning board, not all planning board members necessarily saw the original proposal, but for those that didn't, essentially, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, you're kind of mirroring the existing two-story structure, kind of on the other side where the garage is essentially a connection between the two. So it's a much larger, much larger bulking and massing.
Right.
Than there is now.
And I may be biased, but I think that this is an improvement over what the existing conditions are.
Yeah, I mean, the garage, the garage in its current state is pretty much falling over, pretty crooked. So it's going to have to be fixed in some way or another. So we'd really love to add a second bay to it to give us a little bit more usability.
Sure. So can you clarify for me where you are, Scott, with the health department and what track that's on?
Well, Megan and Andrew have been working directly with engineer on that.
Yeah, so we have, we've already submitted some initial plans about probably six weeks ago, and they asked us to work with an engineer to design the system because our lot is very wet and has a high water level. So we've been working with an engineer. It's going to have to be an above-ground system. So we're planning on bringing in a large amount of fill. And he's designed the system and has it ready to go and resubmit to the health department. But we just want to make sure that with this addition, we wouldn't have to potentially make any major changes to the footprint of the addition before we submit the plan for where the location of the fill pad will be.
I will say that we have been coordinating with their engineer. So this, this plan that's before you is compatible with his design. And there were two, initially two lots here, and we consolidated them.
Um, Jim, do you want to comment on that? I'll ask for your other comments at this time as well.
Yeah, really, I, well, I have a minor comment, but the, well, two minor ones, I guess, but the primary discussion really is this came before the planning board because it's on a scenic road for discussion of, you know, massing and look and design. I guess hearing that there's going to be, I guess, a mound system for the septic in there is something new that I think is going to have to be shown on the site plans if that's being done in conjunction with this. And certainly make sure you're talking with the building department if you haven't already. We talked with Dave Pearson, with Dave Pearson in county health.
Aaron, Aaron Pathic is our engineer, so they've been coordinating. So.
Yeah, so we talked quite a bit, so that we'll have to make sure that that's all coordinated before, because all of that really should be shown on the site plan as this goes to approval.
Yeah, Aaron has it overlaid, overlaid on the site plan for submission. So that's all ready to go and we can share that.
So you might be able to do that for the public, before the public hearing, you think?
Yeah, the drawings are done. We just, we can share those with you.
Okay.
Okay, and then the timeline, you know, we'll be waiting then to hear from the health department with their approval.
Yep.
Okay.
So will I, with the laundry situation.
Hi, now with two children.
Yeah.
Um, I'll open, Jim, anything else?
Just two minor things. One, I didn't see any proposed exterior lighting showing on the elevations or any cuts for that. So if you do propose lighting, and I'm guessing you will, around the new garage doors or, you know, the front door, that should be added to the elevations provided and not necessarily the rendering, certainly the elevations were part of the plan set. And give us a cut of what that light would look like to make sure that it's consistent with the town code. You know, it has to be cutoff lighting, dark stack compliant, that kind of thing.
Certainly.
And then the only other one I had is, I believe when we talked about this at the pre-conference meeting, there was a large tree that we thought might be impacted by the driveway. I just don't see it on the plans. I don't know if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so we have a large oak tree that is currently about probably 10 feet from the existing garage. So it would actually, it would be okay with this addition, not that we would want a huge oak tree hanging, hanging over the garage. But with the septic repair, the tree is going to have to come down because of the roots and the proximity to the system. We did have the tree looked at by an arborist last year who came to kind of clean it up for us. And it is diseased, so it would have to come down probably within the next couple of years anyway, but this is just going to have to expedite it.
Just to reinforce, the tree needs to come down because of the septic system, not because of the desired addition.
Yes, I think, I think she was very clear about that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
No, that's really all I had, Melody.
All right, planning board members, questions? Comments? All right, hearing none, we have a procedural resolution for your consideration.
Yeah, so it's a site plan review procedure resolution for Andrew, Megan Cahill for construction of one-story addition two-car garage and relocation of the driveway to 38 Rhine Cliff Road. Accepting the application, supporting documents, adequate further review by the planning board, classifying the action as type 2 under seeker. We will send this application to the CAB and the WAC because we are within the LWRA. We will send this to Dutchess County Planning for their review. Schedule a public hearing for September 6th. And we need to assign two planning board members to do a site.
Is it going to Hay Pack because of the scenic road?
Doesn't have to because of the scenic road. No, I don't believe it's historic.
Okay, that's fine. Planning board members, who would like to make a site?
Oh, Melody.
Edna, and I thought.
I'll join Edna.
Okay, thank you very much. Could I have then a motion to accept the procedural resolution?
So move.
Thank you, Craig. Second, Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, the motion carries. We will be in touch with you to schedule a site visit.
Great, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Take care. Have a nice evening. All right, our third new application this evening is Balaji. I'm not sure I'm saying that right. I apologize. Alvin Jamore, 303 Route 308, site plan review and special use permit, minor subdivision. And I think Mark is here to represent the applicant. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. So this is a, there's actually two applications being made with regard to property. One to the planning board, obviously, for this evening. And then also, application has been made to the, the town zoning board of appeals. And so I'll get to that in a minute. So Alvin Jamore is proposing to do a two-lot minor subdivision, which also requires special permit for conventional subdivision. But it's a two-lot minor subdivision of approximately, it's 12.267 acres. Lot number 3A, which is located to the south, is exactly six acres. And then proposed lot number 3B is to the north, and that's the balance of it, which is 6.2 acres of land. There's an existing residence that is located on lot number 3A. It has frontage on New York State Route 308. And this proposal shows all that frontage on 308 would be, or a majority of that frontage on 308 would be associated with this lot. Access to this, to the residence and a garage located on the property is also from Route 308. And so where this subdivision is, is a little more unique is that the, the other lot being, being proposed as part of this application, lot number 3B, will actually have access, or I should say, frontage on both Route 308. And then if you go all the way to the north, it actually has frontage at the end of the cul-de-sac on Peacock Road. So when Peacock, when the subdivision that created Peacock Road was done, the town right away was extended to the property to the south, which is, which is this property. And so what's unique about this application is that, and you can see that I, I show two points of access for a proposed residence for lot number 3B. One, one point of access would be via a common drive entrance at the, at the location of the existing entrance on 308. And then a long driveway would, would need to be constructed for to the location which is being, for the residence location, which is being proposed for lot number 3B. What's also shown for this board's consideration is access from Peacock Road and to the north. And you can see it's a much shorter and more efficient access to the property, which leads into my initial statement that this application is also in front of the town zoning board of appeals. And the reason for that is that subdivision code limits 12 driveway access points off of a cul-de-sac road. And so Peacock Road, there's, there's a, there's a loop road as part of the subdivision. But the, the actual cul-de-sac section of Peacock Road has, already has four existing driveway access points from it. And so this would be, under this proposal, it would be the 15th access point at the end, at the end of Peacock Road, right at, right at its cul-de-sac. So last month, met with the, had an initial application with the zoning board of appeals and presented this application. It was actually tabled because they requested some additional information, which has been provided. And that additional information was to review previous records of approval for, for the subdivision where Peacock Road is located. And to, to just verify that there was nothing in any of the, there was no, there wasn't language present in the resolutions that existed for the initial subdivision, which, you know, and there actually has been subsequent subdivision of parcels in that, in that subdivision. So that information's been forwarded to the ZBA. And obviously going back and scheduled to discuss this at the, the next August meeting of the ZBA. This particular application to the planning board will be requesting, you know, subdivision approval as a non-realty subdivision with the health department. So what it, what will occur is providing a location of existing water supply and sewage disposal system locations for lot number 3A. And then I will supervise some testing that's witnessed by the health department for potential location of a well and septic system for lot number 3B and provide that information to the planning board. Certifying that, you know, I feel that this lot being created will be able to support individual water and wastewater disposal under the current regulations of the Dutchess County Health Department. So I think that, I think that summarizes this application to the planning board.
Okay, Jim?
Melody, really just one primary comment. I mean, the existing home is historic. So we should probably send this to Hay Pack. I do think I missed that in the resolution, but we'll make sure to add that. I don't know that it doesn't, it's a lot changed, but anyway. Mainly, it really just comes down to, for me, that, you know, the discussion of the driveway access, and we did discuss a little bit of the pre-con. But the driveway access really is going to boil down to what the CBA finds, so it doesn't necessarily matter what I have to say. Other than, you know, the town did recently adopt some language in zoning codes stating access should be taken from the highest classification road unless deemed not feasible, reasonable, or safe. I think obviously the ZBA will take that under consideration. I do think because it is state Route 308, if we can get access to Peacock Road, that would probably make sense from a safety perspective, just because it's a lower volume road, a lower speed road for what is going to be a single-family home. It's not a large subdivision. That would be a different discussion. And then also, from a feasibility perspective, if you look at the length of the driveway, you know, if we're looking at environmental impact and things like that, the shorter driveway to Peacock Lane certainly would make sense versus. Uh, and then also from a feasibility perspective, if you look at the length of the driveway, um, you know, if we're looking at environmental impact and things like that, at the shorter driveway to Peacock Lane certainly would make sense versus the longer driveway out to three oh eight, uh, which would have more impact on the, on the ground. Um, so really, you know, all those comments will really wrap up the Z B A anyway. Um, so we'll have to wait and see what they say. Other than that, I really didn't have anything else to say. It meets the code setbacks, the minimum size, things like that. So.
Um, okay, planning board members, questions, comments?
Uh, Mark, both of the lots meet the, uh, net buildable land requirement?
Yes, they do.
It's really all I have.
Thank you, Edna. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, let's see our draft procedural resolution. Here we go.
Okay, draft procedural resolution for Alvin Jamar for minor subdivision. At Route three oh, uh, three oh three, Route three oh eight. Accepting the application and supporting documents is adequate for further review by the planning board. Classifying this action is unlisted under seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded, i.e. not needed. Uh, we will send this, uh, to the C A B for their review. I believe we should send it to hay pack just because it is a historic structure, even though nothing is happening to that. I would expect it to be an expedited review. Um, and we'll schedule this. Okay, so this is one question. We need to schedule a public hearing. Mark, you are at the Z B A. Do you want to go for September? Or would you like to push that off a little bit knowing the Z B A's schedule, I guess?
So, uh, so Z B A, um, I'm hopeful that the additional information I provided, uh, Z B A would be able to schedule a public hearing for, I guess it would be Sept- September, right? Yeah, so it would be August meeting. So Z B A, at best, we have public hearing in September. Um, so I, I guess it, uh, you know, it doesn't make any sense to come back to this board until we at least, uh, go to public hearing with the Z B A.
Yeah, so that would be our first meeting in October.
October third.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
October third. Uh, I'm going to delegate to planning board members for a site visit.
Members, site visit.
Go, Delise.
Delise would like to go with Delise. I know. Okay, Edna, thank you. Um, cute boy, Michael and Joe just escaped with everything, didn't they? Okay. Um, all right, so could I have a motion then to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Thanks, Edna, second please.
Sean.
Thanks, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, uh, we can now move into the public hearing part of our meeting this evening. Uh, the first up is Von der Lee, four ten White Schoolhouse Road. Site plan and special use permit mining and reclamation renewal. Uh, Mark is still here. Yep, and Mark, you are representing Von der Lee, I believe.
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you want to, uh, just quickly refresh our memory?
So ju- just, you know, based on the, the last, uh, the, the reason that the public hearing was continued is, uh, was that, you know, the proposed resolution had a, um, had a section in it that, um, you know, just requested, um, consideration by the applicant uh, to continue to, uh, work with, uh, the planning board and the town with regard to, um, you know, the traffic, uh, concerns on White Schoolhouse Road. And since the applicant wasn't present at the last meeting, I asked to be adjourned. Um, so I had the opportunity to speak to him. So he has agreed, uh, to the conditions of the, what was the resolution at the last meeting?
Thank you. We certainly appreciate that. Um, Jim, is there anything else you'd like to add? Or would you like to, uh, give us some guidance on what we can do next with this?
No, I, I think that's good. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Um, you know, the, the, um, requirement Mark's referring to is we are going to, we were talking with, one of the reasons this is kind of continuing for a couple of months is we're talking about, um, the combined truck traffic impact on White Schoolhouse Road from this operation, another one that was proposed. Uh, the other operation that was proposed is currently not on the planning board agenda, so there is no combined truck impact to discuss. We only have one application for the board right now. As such, in, in coordination with John Lyons, making sure that we were all, uh, doing this illegally, um, we have decided that it is time, um, given the current situation, to move this forward on its own merits. Um, but that combined discussion is off the table until a future date. And that's why that, um, that request is put into the, uh, the draft approval resolution. So, um, you know, given that, I don't, if, unless any planning board members have any questions or issues, you do have a draft seeker resolution, uh, part two and part three that I submitted to you and a draft approval resolution, if you want to take that up tonight. Um, I don't have any other questions. We have discussed this one a couple of times. And, um, I guess I'd open up to you, Melody, and the board to decide how you want to proceed, but, uh, we should proceed with this one on its, like I said, on its own merits at this point.
All right, I open it up to planning board members for their comments.
I'm happy with proceeding.
Does anyone have any objections to proceeding? No. Um, Jim, let me ask if there's anyone from the public here who'd like to comment?
Hope please raise your hand and turn on your screen. I don't see anyone, Melody.
All right, um, has everyone had a chance to look at the short E A F?
Yeah.
Are there any questions? Are you interested in having Jim walk through the short E A F? Or are you okay with proceeding?
I don't think it's necessary myself.
Is there anyone who feels they'd like to walk through it? Everyone's okay with it? Um, all right, Jim, do you want to, um, I'll leave it up to you since it's your resolution to sort of, uh, go over that with us?
Sure. So essentially what I did, because this is, this is not a type one, um, uh, actually, I went through and reviewed the, the E A F for you and filled in that I, I believe, based on all the materials submitted, it's nowhere small impact may occur. Uh, all the questions are really based around, um, existing regulations and changes to the land and things like that. What's going on here is a permit renewal that's been going on for years. So really no changes, um, to, to what exists today. So I fill that out. If you want to agree, that's great. We will have Melody sign that. We will, um, finalize the E A F form. With that, uh, I do have a draft seeker resolution for your consideration. Um, I guess I can just kind of get into the details of it, but essentially it's, uh, you know, actually pull up on the screen.
Should I, uh, have a motion first to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I have a motion. Thank you, Edna, second please.
I can, Sean.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion is carried. Okay, sorry, Jim.
Nope, sorry, I was getting ahead of myself here. Um, so with the public hearing closed, then I guess, um, might, I think the thing to do is to see if we're ready to, to pass these resolutions. So the first one related to the secret E A F form is a seeker resolution, uh, where the planning board hereby access follows on the proposed action involving, um, an application by Von der Lee Soil Mine to the planning board for renewal of the special use permit under town code chapter one, two, five, section one twenty five, sixty eight F F at four ten White Schoolhouse Road. Within the R C five, uh, M I O mining overlay in Ag District twenty-two, um, continue their, uh, surface and subblock with mining operations as proposed and submitted, uh, as well as a related waiver from town code chapter one twenty wetlands pursuant to one twenty-eight A. Uh, so pursuant to the planning board's classification of the action is unlisted under seeker and, uh, determining upon the review of the short E A F, part one, discussions of the projects and completion of the annexed short E A F, part two, to be discussed. In consideration of both the criteria for determining significance and field observation of the existing mining operation associated site rehab, the proposed action as described will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment. And thus issue a negative declaration under seeker, deeming an environmental impact statement not be required and stating that such will not be prepared. And asking the board to authorize the chair to execute the short E A F and direct the clerk to distribute and file the executed determination of significance in the matter set forth within secret regulations. So essentially, we're asking you to approve the secret form that we just filled out.
May, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Edna, second please.
I can, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed extensions. All right, and then you have a procedural resolution for us?
An approval resolution.
Yes, sorry, excuse me.
No, no problem. Lots of resolutions flying around to me. Uh, an approval resolution again for Von der Lee Soil Mine, um, for the mining permit renewal that is, um, required under town code. Uh, and as part of the five-year New York State D E C mining and reclamation permit renewal. Reaffirming the action is unlisted under seeker based upon the information and reports from planning board members and C A B and members finding the work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one, two, five. With respect to the waiver for development near wetlands per section one twenty, one twenty-eight A of Article Five supplementary regulations, asking the planning board to waive said requirements for the reasons stated in the application letter dated February seventh, twenty twenty-two. As has been done in the past for this operation. This has been a request that's been made in the past that has been approved in the past. This is not a new request.
Correct.
With respect to the special use permit to authorize the work, and I'll just kind of summarize this, um, but I do want to hit all the, the high points. Um, finding the use and work consistent with general standards for special use permits. Waiving other time limitations set forth with, within the code with respect to special use permit and the D E C permit. That's all fine and good. I think we're okay there, right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. And then granting the special use permit conditioned upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board and the following conditions, all of which I get, again, want to note are the same as we have done in the past for other, uh, renewals for this application. Uh, with one exception, and that is the first one, uh, that Mark discussed earlier, that the applicant will continue to work with the town planning board uh, and the town board if necessary regarding discussions, concerns, and assessments of combined truck traffic impact on White Schoolhouse Road. Um, should that come about in the future, um, if and when the other, uh, mining operation comes back to the planning board for discussion. Per town code chapter one, two, five, section sixty-eight F F, the permit is limited to a, uh, permit of five years. Uh, end of the mining area of seven acres, not more than five acres, but should be disturbed at any one time. Limit trucks employed in the haulage of sand and gravel to not more than ten-wheel, twelve-cubic-guard capacity. Again, consistent with what's been done in the past. Limit the mining and loading activities at certain hours, um, and certain, uh, limiting in certain days. Requiring an annual inspection of the mine by the zoning enforcement officer and the planning board's engineer. Recurring on or about December fifteenth of every year and filing written reports. In lieu of a maintenance, uh, of performance guarantee with the town requiring that the applicant inform the zoning enforcement officer and planning board when the final site reclamation is in progress. And, um, requiring maintenance and operation in good standing under the terms of the New York State D E C permit. So those are special use conditions with respect to the site plan, application and approval. Typical, uh, wording, finding the work and intended use consistent with town code chapter one, two, five, section one, two, five, seven, five. Of the application materials and plans submitted by Mark Kaminsky dated February seventh, twenty twenty-two. And we're asking the, uh, planning board to authorize the chair to stamp and sign a bus-sighted site plan on the applicant's satisfaction of the four below conditions. And or requirements.
All right.
So there's a.
May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Thank you, Craig. Second?
I can, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. I'll pull the board. Sean?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for being back with us on that.
Thank you. I, 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 I forgot to also mention, D E C has issued their permit, uh, for this project. So, um, if the, if the D E C hasn't forwarded to the town, I certainly will. I'll, I'll make sure Gretchen gets a copy.
Okay.
I believe we've, yeah, I believe you've seen that, Mark. That's why I asked about the timing issue. I don't think it's an issue because you already have that permit.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next up, Amy Koppelman, five hundred, Route three oh eight, site plan review. The addition of French doors and replace garage doors on a historic house. Is anyone here representing the Koppelmanns? All right, we, because we've been moving so smoothly, we'll defer them and loop back because Mark is here, and I think we can move ahead with Rockledge and then circle back if someone comes online. Is that all right with you, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Melody, I recuse from this.
Thank you, Edna, for reminding us. Um, all right, Mark, um, would you like to update us?
Yes, I will. Um, so we're still, uh, so, uh, still in the process of finalizing, uh, some documents with, uh, the town's engineer uh, with regard to, uh, some drainage, um, uh, drainage design and also, uh, you know, presentation of the last, at the, at the last meeting. Uh, there was a, uh, once again, I, I mentioned a, uh, a slight change in, in unit configuration. And so, um, uh, and I also emphasize that it did not, uh, affect or increase any of the, uh, you know, design footprint or disturbance area for the project. Still working out some of those details with the town engineers. Um, and then also, uh, finalizing, um, reports, uh, for both water and sewer. Uh, for, uh, presentation to the board, actually getting into some, uh, design, uh, details now. And then, and then, uh, obviously providing, uh, any information that the, uh, uh, planning board, uh, requests or needs, uh, for us to move forward with the project.
Okay. Jim, any comments?
No, Mark kind of led right into my main comment, which is, I think, you know, from my perspective, we're at the point where I think every bit, thing's been submitted unless other planning board members feel otherwise. Um, I think we've seen all the documentation that has been requested and reviewed it over, you know, the course of several years now, and, um, I have been beginning to start working on the seeker review for this project, assuming that we will be moving forward to review the seeker on this as the type one. Um, but mainly it, it really comes down to, you know, discussing kind of the next steps moving forward. I do understand there are some discussions going on with the town engineer, and those will have to be, you know, worked through. But from a planning perspective, I think we've, we've received all the materials that we had expected unless anyone says otherwise. And I don't have any new comments.
Okay, um, anyone else from the planning board? All right, I see some members of the public here. I will open it up. Um, raise your hand or let Jim know in the chat room that you'd like to make comments and we'll be happy to hear from you. All right.
Anyone, Melody?
Okay, um, then we'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
Don't move, Sean.
Second, please. And we would be continuing it to when Gretchen? September sixth? Mark, is that agreeable?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the public hearing to September sixth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, raise your hands.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Um, so I do not see anyone here from, uh, the Koppelman application. So I think I would entertain a motion to continue that hearing as well.
I actually have Amy on the phone. They're gonna try and log in.
Did she call you, Gretchen?
I had called her.
Um, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I will watch the, uh, participant list from the login.
Melody, I've rejoined.
Thank you, Edna.
No, did you have Jeopardy music?
No. I should, shouldn't I? Would anybody like to comment for me?
It'd be fitting, right?
I can always hit pause on the record, so it makes it seem like there was no time between.
Do you have any updates Gretchen?
Yeah, she's trying to log on right now.
So I'm not there to say no. I am keeping an eye on it.
Gretchen, I'm just gonna give it a couple more minutes.
There's Amy.
She said she should be on.
She just logged in. Amy, if you can unmute your line. Turn on your video.
Did that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can you see me too?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't see you because I have like something, some agenda up, but I'm glad you can see me. Sorry, I didn't know there was a meeting.
Um, alright. Would you like to update us, Amy?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, we did the plans per your suggestion and turned them in. These were. The elevations and stuff that. You. That that were, you know, suggested. And the doors would need to be custom. To fit into that space. But we we drew them. Where it only took up the two windows. And the elevation that I guess, I mean, Tim could speak better to to that. But.
But he's not here. Did you discuss with HAPAC the suggestion that Michael Trumbull made last month, which was to utilize the space where the two? Existing windows are?
Yeah, I that's what we did. We we copied exactly Michael Trumbull's what he said to do.
No, what he was suggesting was that where the two windows are now. They become the the doors. If I'm if I'm recalling correctly, if I'm not, others can. Craig, do you recall what he suggested?
I I think that that was a point that was discussed. I I I know that. You know, from. What I see of this building, I I really, I find it objectionable to interrupt this. Passade at all. With any changes in penetration or doorways. And, you know, whether you put them where. The long windows are or where the short stable windows are, it's still. An irreversible intervention in. One of our national register listed. Properties and. I think there must be another way to achieve. The applicant's aims.
You know, um. We, you know, I've I've. I've I've spent so much money trying to. Understand and do this responsibly. I know it's on the national registry, but it's, I mean, I I spoke to the. I I spoke to a Stanford White expert. He gave me a design. Then that design was rejected. I did the design that was given to me. I'm sorry, what what's the architect's name that we met with? I just you just had said his name, who's on the planning board?
I think you're talking about somebody from HAPAC.
No, no, um. From Philadelphia, he's on the board.
It's on the board of HAPAC.
Oh, okay. No, I thought he was on the board of that. We we followed exactly what he said about elevation. And, you know, this this house has been. We've restored this house and made it much nicer. Like I said, my husband grew up in the Stanford White House. Well, now we found out after speaking to. The Stanford White people, it's not actually Stanford White, but um. And so, you know, I'm not trying to do anything that's objectionable. I'm just trying to add a little bit of light into the house. And I've done the plan so many different ways. I mean. It doesn't seem. When the house is that far off the road and there's been that many changes, it doesn't really seem fair to me to say. That, you know. You find something objectionable. When it's in good taste and. I mean, the the place had Georgian pillars put on the house like there's, we we just spent so much money like. Fixing the chimneys so they would be all perfect, you know, to to stay within. All of the original. You know, work like it would have been much cheaper just to get rid of the chimney. So, you know, I don't know what to do anymore, how to please everybody on the board. But I'd like to just say that, you know, if you just thought about it from my perspective, it's. And I live in the house. It just seems like. A lot to ask somebody to not allow any light in a room. Because from afar, you think that it is objectionable. I I don't mean to be rude when I say that I. Or contrary, I'm just trying so hard to. Get this right that.
May I ask some questions?
Sure. Way to take this down so I could see everybody's faces. I'm I don't even know where I'm I'm looking, but. It's okay, sorry. I don't know who's speaking to me. But. Oh, good, thank you. Oh, hi.
Okay. I I thought I saw Kathy Hammer. Online before. Is she still there?
No.
No.
Okay, she was there. Five minutes ago. Can we see the design? I can't see the design anymore.
Yeah, I'll bring it back a bit.
I just want to understand, first of all, what you've done.
Okay, so our original design copy.
Wait, wait, wait. May I just ask some questions?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay. What I'm seeing for one thing is a difference in the windows. Is is that something that the? Our historical board asked you to do?
They they asked me to go from. I think originally it was five stable windows to the two stable windows to work within the framework of those two stable windows. So in order to do that, we had to get custom doors because doors don't get made in that size. So we did that. We like. Made the windows. To match as close as we could all the other doors and windows in the house. Like remember how there's all those French doors? So we tried to copy those, so at least. It would look uniform when you're in, you know, in the room or looking at the house when it look. Ugly.
Melody, do we know whether this is the recommendation from HAPAC?
It was the recommendation from Marty. I don't know. I can't verify that the entire committee met to discuss.
Okay, but their architect has recommended this solution?
Well, there are three architects on HAPAC. This is the recommendation of one.
Well, I mean, if I guess. I'm. Disappointed that we don't have some kind of formal. Recommendation from HAPAC here.
We have you you did, I believe you all were forwarded and received Marty's comments. Is that correct?
I got these drawings.
I was under the impression that there was a written document that was submitted by Marty.
I may have missed it somehow.
Am I? Am I seeing Sean and Delise? Did you see the comments from Marty?
I don't think I did, actually. I'm I'm just trying to pull it up now to see if I missed something, but I don't think I did.
Alright, then I then I think. That in the absence of two planning board members would would lead me to believe that I'd like to continue it until we've all had a chance. To review what was what was prepared by HAPAC or Marty, I'm sorry. By Marty.
Well, I'd also like to hear from the entire committee.
My opinion is the same as Craig's. I think it is a significant enough building. That I would hate to see further changes. I understand Amy's certainly understand Amy's point of view. However, the changes that took pay took place previously. Were before, not certainly before HAPAC and before. There was a full understanding of the significance of the building. That's simply my own opinion.
Well. I have a, I have a. Concern. With. The fact that it leaves a room. I guess it's not unusable. But it's, you know, I've been inside. It is far less than. One would hope for for, you know, major dining room. I I wonder whether there is some other. Alternative that does not disturb the upper windows. I thought that that was probably, you know, a possible. Solution.
Craig, do you have any suggestions?
Well, it's I don't think it's up to me to design the floor plan for the applicant, and I think the it's. I I haven't been there myself, but from what I understand, it is a fine house. And that would indicate that it's already been successfully converted. From a carriage house to a residence. And in its present state, it still retains a lot of its historic integrity. And I believe that integrity will be compromised by the design that I'm looking at right now. So I, well, again.
Like we spent so much time, everybody did, speaking with the eight. A pack with with Marty and. We changed the plans. We we've I've spent now like so much money trying to get it right. And this was what was what I was told. Or certainly I inferred that. That this was going to be. Acceptable and so I don't. You know, I don't know how to, I mean, obviously I can't keep guessing. If if in fact, you're never going to agree to the windows, but I would really love if you. If you had the time to come and see the room. To see how dark it is and to like maybe experiencing experience it because. Again, it's. It's just about letting light into one room. It the house is set back. I've made the house so much prettier and more in keeping with the original way that it was that I just think. It would be great if you could at least. Give me that. You know, you know, opportunity to explain to show you in real life. Because if you saw it in real life, you'd see and. Anyway.
Alright, well, we can we can accommodate that request of yours, but we would have to continue the public hearing to do that. We can do that and we can schedule. I I'm happy to come and I I think Craig is interested in coming. So we can do that and we'll continue the public hearing and and. Schedule another site visit to go over it with you. Is that acceptable to you, Amy?
Yeah, that's great. I just would love the opportunity to show Craig so he could see.
Okay.
Um, you know that I'm not. What the room is.
Alright, so Craig, is that a motion?
Ah, yeah, I I would move to continue the public hearing and schedule a site visit before then.
Alright, um. Second, please. I will second it. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posed. Extensions. Alright, Amy, we'll be back in touch with you.
That public hearing will be September sixth.
Write this down so. I don't miss it, okay?
Alright, thank you.
I I I just want to say, um. I'm not that this matters or is reflective of taste, but I'm. A director and a writer and aesthetics, I'm very. I'm very. Like influenced by aesthetics, like it it changes my mood if something's ugly, so.
Right.
I really am not looking to make anything uglier, Craig.
Okay, well, Amy and I I can appreciate that and it could be absolutely the most beautiful addition, the most beautiful set of doors that you've ever laid eyes on. But from my perspective as a preservationist, if it interrupts the historic integrity, then it interferes with. What I perceive as the beauty, which is the. The historic integrity of.
Alright, I think we can.
I know we're gonna hang up, but I just want to say, because I don't think you were here the last time when I had spoken to the Stanford White people, they said to make it the width. That's why it is of a stable door, so. To show the usage was agricultural, so, um. Alright.
We'll talk about that in the field and we'll be in touch, Amy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think that concludes the business for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move, Delise.
Thank you, all those second. All those in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed extensions. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Try and stay cool and we'll. See you in a couple weeks. Take care.